...at seven p.m. Our invocation this evening will be given by Bill Rosenberg.
I think the mayor picked the one in the black jacket. Our Father, we ask for your blessings tonight on our proceedings. We know that you came and talked with Moses, and we know that you came and talked with Isaiah. We ask that you come and talk with us tonight. Be with all of us here, all suffering from respiratory diseases and other illnesses. Forgive us our sins, guide us and direct us. Help us to be your servants, in your Son's name we pray. Amen.
We've established a forum, Councilman Rodriguez, Councilman Guerrero, Councilman Ortiz, Councilman Dejada, and Councilman Jeter will be here shortly. Now everyone will stand for the U.S. pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this Texas flag, I have led your allegiance to me, to Texas, one state, one God, one and indivisible.
Does anyone have any citizens comments? If not, we're going to start with full business. One A, consideration and action to approve meeting minutes for regular council meeting on January the eighth. Councilman Dejada?
Mayor, if I could correct a couple of items. This is, I guess, from Monica. Whenever someone abstains, I think we need to put like three zero one, or three zero two, or three two one.
Okay.
Three two, or four one. Okay, we need to turn that over.
I wish when it was that, that extra, that the zero one.
Madam Mayor, I believe also at the beginning of the meeting, Councilman Rodriguez made some comments regarding my eligibility to sit on the council.
Do you want that in minutes?
That should be part of the minutes, and maybe you can ask him exactly what he said, but it was something about whether I should be qualified to sit on the council. Somebody let up that.
It should be on tape, huh?
Yeah, she can refer back to it.
Yes.
Can we have the minutes then tabled until there's additions are corrected for our next meeting?
Is that a motion, Colonel?
That's a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Dejada, a second by Councilman Ortiz. Councilman Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Dejada?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries for zero. It's going to the second meeting minutes of January the twenty-second.
On three, on the executive session, she noted, we recorded also that an election was taken.
I believe that change. Also, we're down somewhere about which councilman we're here. It says Councilman Rodriguez was unable to attend and asked to be excused. I think that was like to exact the eight o'clock, or the fifteen?
Negative.
Oh, I didn't notice it until eight, until eight o'clock, because we could have sent it to you earlier.
I will send it earlier.
But I did not read it until the time I know they didn't. Do I change?
Yes.
Anybody have a hand changes on? Is not invited to have a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, which correction on the
No action.
On the no action.
Is that on three?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second, ma'am.
And thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, how do you vote?
I abstained, I wasn't.
And, Councilman Dejada?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to go ahead and go on with our presentation and discussions. First up on is A, Wilson County, one hundred and fifty-five birthday proclamation. Councilman Dejada, you want to read the proclamation?
Sure. The proclamation, Wilson County, eighteen sixty to twenty fifteen. Whereas Wilson County was cut out of Bear and Carnes Counties by an act of legislature on February thirteenth, eighteen sixty. Whereas Wilson County serves the communities of Wilson County with more than forty-four thousand residents, and provide essential services to create healthy, safe, vibrant, and economically resilient communities. And whereas Wilson County built infrastructure, maintained roads and bridges, provide healthcare, administered justice, keep communities safe, run elections, manage solid waste, keep records, and much more. And whereas Wilson County takes pride in the responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of its residents in sensible and cost-effective ways. And whereas Wilson County has served its residents since eighteen sixty, and having been in service for one hundred and fifty-five years as county. Now therefore, being resolved that I, Mayor Garza, hereby wish Wilson County a happy birthday of one hundred and fifty-five years to this day, February twelfth, twenty fifteen. Signed by the Honorable Mayor Diana Garza, City of Florida.
Do you have a speech to accept the proclamation? I'll deliver it. It's got some errors in it, so I'll get it corrected and I'll deliver it to you.
Pardon?
It's got some errors in it, so we're going to have to correct it.
Okay.
And I'll bring it to you.
Do you want me to comment?
Yes, you may, please.
Okay. On behalf of Wilson County, thank you for the proclamation, it was recorded. I have a historical note that I'd like to pass on that Ms. Turner gave to me a while ago. Alfred Giles, a known architect of the eighteen eighties, the person that designed our courthouse. This is the only courthouse, he designed several courthouses, three that I know of, Wilson County, Guadalupe County, and Carnes County, among others. This is the only courthouse that when we get restored and back in it, will be actually still being used. So, it's, it's something that we're getting back in the courthouse, and we appreciate the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is going to be item two B, our city manager's report.
Madam Mayor, before you proceed, if you want a motion in support of your proclamation, I'm just going to have that replaced.
It's on, it's under the next.
It's under the next.
Did you want to do that now, Mayor, or did you want to wait? No, actually, it's not on there, it's in the last.
Okay, do you have a minute? Mayor, as you see, that's the council, I can report to you very sincerely. There are two items we can go over. We did receive the lawnmower for the water sewer department. A staff would be meeting with the local agencies and owner of the corner store to discuss the traffic issue that we had several questions and concerns. I know Mimi's office has received several questions and references to the corner store that's coming up. You can see the construction, so we're going to be meeting next week with surrounding owners so that we can talk about traffic control, some issues and references to streets and access, and so we'll be setting that up. But you can see the picture of the lawnmower as it came to fruition. The hike and bike trail, we were able to apply on February first for some painting for the hike and bike trail, we're really excited about that. And there's a new tech document that's coming out as due in May, and we're going to be applying for that as well. So hopefully we can get some grants going on for our hike and bike trail. CPG application has been completed, and thank you Mayor for signing the application. It's been submitted to them, and it's actually due in March, so we have that in time. The mayor and I was able to attend the EDC board meeting last week. And, and what they're doing is they're going to be joining with us for our workshop on February seventeenth. And we're going to have two presenters, one's going to be talking about some of whom have seen before. Social media and marketing is one. Presenting the other presenter's strategies, retail strategies, and references to marketing for this area. And hopefully we can do some joint issues in reference to that. This is just a presentation, there'll be no action asked, but we're having a joint meeting between the council and EDC board. Our auditors, the auditors have almost completed their bill work. Municipal court is the last department that needs to meet with the auditor. And following the completion of that audit testing, we can set a date for the audit committee to meet, to review the draft audit. And it is very imperative that we make the goal of March twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen, so we can go on and start meeting with our financial advisor as we select a bond council, as well as the workshops that we have planned in April with the four A as we prepare for the reception of that room. Psycho Ranch, the owner of Psycho Ranch would like to present to you all next week, so I'm going to put him on the agenda. A reference to partnering with some activities he's having, has invented in May, that may bring the access of about five thousand people to the city of Torresville. So he's hoping that we can work together and partner, but I'll let him present to that team next week. Mimi, not only meeting with Chris Stewart, who, as you see, the attorney already talking about annexation. So that is very important, because I was up there just yesterday, passing by Richardson's car, dealership, their sign's up, it was coming. We need to go ahead and make sure they were annexing that, we're going to start that process. We don't want to miss steps, so that's why we're meeting with the attorney and the consultant, Chris Stewart, to help us to go forward, and we should be able to have a plan to do at the next meeting, as to the dates that we need to hit. For example, public hearing, when the buses blow out, those type of things are gold. So we can lay out the plan, come up with those dates, and then start putting those dates forward. We asked you, we have ordinances, and I know that the second day that the parents have to do streetwalks, whatever, they have ordinances, and that's really, really important. We're going to be working with Chris Stewart on sign ordinances, fence ordinances, demolition, sidewalk, parking ordinance review. And for parking, we're talking about, maybe you're suggesting something like an improved surface, so if you put crushed stone and/or sidewalks, or concrete, and/or asphalt, and not necessarily grass or dirt, to allow people to do that, so we need to address that. And then of course, land use ordinances. P and D aren't very hard, and we've had a land use plan, but because of some of the recommendations they're doing, we need to change some ordinances. And so those will be committed for you, and we'll start having some draft ordinances. Just to let you know what we're trying to do, and we're trying it again first time for tonight, we want to present you with ordinances for you to look at, have staff come, give your opinion about it, we can have the dialogue at one meeting. We're not asking you to do any action, but at the next meeting, to take action, or subsequent meetings to take action at that time. We deal on this all day long, staff choose on it, we work on it, we break it to the Chinese, but it doesn't give you all opportunity to digest it. So we're just going to try this effect and let you know how it works for you. To give up ordinance, for you to review it, get back with staff, and then maybe at some subsequent meeting, we can talk about passage. Okay? Mayor, that would be my report, are you having any questions for me?
Henry, do you want to add that on that presentation for next week, that those two presenters don't leave, the only two presenters that will have others coming in?
Yes, ma'am. The two presenters that we're having coming in, I know Retail Coach, I know Coach Retail, is another presenter where they have, but we want to be respectful of your time, and not have a meeting to last till twelve or one o'clock. So, we want to be able to let the presenters have that, to be able to choose, of you being asked questions back and forth, and then at another time have other people present on the same topic, and then you can pick and choose. Okay? EDC is very sorry about the meeting, Tommy Baker and I have been here today to make sure that they stay respectful, and the presentation's about fifteen, twenty minutes, and then leave it for discussion, as well as questions for the presenters.
Is that the U.S. schedule meeting? Is it posted?
Yes, sir, actually we posted it today, it's posted for the city council, as well as EDC. Thank you, my report.
Okay, next to EDC, the fourth board report, Judge Chang.
Have you called it, you got a copy of this coming? Okay. This is from October the first to December the thirty-first. Okay, violations by file date, we had three three traffic, forty-five state law, thirteen ordinances, three parking total, five violations, three hundred and sixty-four. Confused cases, we had eighty-five before the traffic, seven state law, one ordinance, one parking, for a total of ninety-four. And then other completed, driver's safety course, twenty-three traffic, before the dedication, and thirty. Two traffic, three city ordinance, one parking, for a total of thirty-six. Dismissed, presented insurance, we had eight of those. On traffic, we had eighteen, for a total of eighteen, then dismissed by prosecutor, we had six on traffic, three on state law, for a total of nine. Waved juvenile jurisdiction, we had two. Buoy deducted, we had ten on traffic. For a total of other completed, it was a hundred and six, grand total completed, two hundred, net difference filed, complete, one sixty-four. Warrants issued, we had four traffic, one state law, a total of five violations, five warrants. Cleared, with traffic eleven, state law was one, total violations twelve, total warrants cleared was twelve. Change in total warrants was seven. And then we had a summary increase for the first quarter from twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen. We had total violations filed in twenty thirteen with two sixty-three, twenty fourteen with three sixty-four, we had a difference of a hundred and one for twenty fourteen. Total completed paid fine before the judge was eighty-eight and thirteen, ninety-four in twenty fourteen, for a difference of six. Total other completed, DSE before the dedication, insurance, all of that, was a hundred in twenty thirteen, a hundred and six in twenty fourteen, a difference of six, an increase of six. Grand total completed, one eighty-eight, twenty thirteen, we had two hundred in twenty fourteen, an increase by twelve. Total warrants issued, twenty thirteen was six, twenty fourteen was five, minus one there. Total warrants cleared, thirteen in twenty thirteen, twelve in twenty fourteen, minus one there. Total other paid fines was twenty-eight in twenty thirteen, seventy-two in twenty fourteen, for a total of, an increase of forty-four. The total fee, fine paid, was thirty thousand, two seventy, and twenty cents in twenty thirteen. In twenty fourteen, it was forty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty point ninety-three, an increase of eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven-three.
Judge, on the first one, were you good traffic for your degree? Is that how many things were issued from October to December?
They're all from October to December.
Is there any way I could break it up so we know how many were issued per month?
Monthly?
That way we can see if there's a high or low?
Well, you can, you can compare two, three months, the last three months of last year, and
I can, I can.
Pardon?
All I have is what you gave me.
Oh, okay. Well, the quarter increase was like See, so you meant to take it the day that the morning, because
For twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen? Because when you said twenty thirteen for the
Judge, that's part of the package she gave you.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, we, that Is that your four A of your executive session?
She did solution on November, November, and November. So I could see if they're doing their Yeah, we're going to do
Pardon?
Very able to do that?
Yeah.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't write these down. Brandon, you just want it broken out by monthly, is that what you're asking?
Why does our report say twenty thirteen to twenty thirteen?
Excuse me?
On the filed cases, it says, report for October first, twenty thirteen to December thirty-first, twenty thirteen.
It's a quarterly report, it's a three month?
But we're not in twenty thirteen.
No, we're just comparing thirteen to fourteen. What the increase was, or decrease was, in twenty thirteen, saying three months, in twenty fourteen, it's in three months. And, you got a copy of thirteen, right? But it's in the report, you have a report?
I just don't see the relevance of the people who are trying to compare the difference in years, all the same months. Quarterly, quarterly report is
They're in the quarterly report, probably from October to December. Did you get that one?
It's, it's It's in there, it's in the fourth, it's in the fourth A.
Yeah, but Judge, that one, Brandon told me to put it in the executive session, so that's been Yes, that report was
It was twenty thirteen, yes.
It's part of your four A package.
I see it, I'm probably right.
Judge, what is our, our plan for the hundred and sixty-four that weren't completed for the quarterly?
Excuse me?
What is our plan for the hundred and sixty-four cases that weren't completed, the violations?
Well, some of them get dismissed by the police officers, you know. And some of them get dismissed by us, because, because it's come wrong with them. You know, like, like when you have a hearing, sometimes we dismiss, to a particular case, that that speed limit wasn't right, that they charted them white, or
I know, but if, if there's two hundred completed in a hundred and sixty-four, are those not completed, or some of those can't be dismissed, you're saying?
No, I think those there, the, the people come in to pay, I mean, the cases are filed, and then they come in, and they try to make an arrangement with Brandon, and then, you know, they
So these are still working cases?
Excuse me?
Those are still working cases?
Yeah. They come in, you know, and they make a deal, and then they probably then do it in three months, or six months, and and then you don't see them again, you gotta go pick them up, you know.
Okay, next is a presentation or discussion on hands-free cell phone and ordinance council reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, Stephen Gerson. Tonight, I'm asking for a discussion from the public council, how they feel on this hands-free cell phone ordinance. Due to our growth in our highways and streets, I think it's about time that we look into this hands-free ordinance. So, Mayor?
Any citizen comments on that?
I checked with the chief today as far as how many accidents were due to cellphone usage. And he didn't have any any reports on because of cell phones. And then he was also concerned about whether they would be able to use cell phones for their own use. How would we know, or somebody like, just recently, the city of San Antonio passed that law, and some of the, the one city council members still using their phones after they passed it. And so, the chief wanted to know how are we going to be able to detect whether they were using their own cell phones for personal use, or, you know, signal. My view on it is I don't like government, too much government telling us what to do. Now, as far as, I can see around the school area was congested, we had a lot of traffic. Out of the city limits, if we haven't had any reports though, of accidents due to cell phones, I don't think we need to impose that on the citizens. Now, maybe further studies need to be made, but I don't think that you put a stoplight at every four-way stop that has an accident, until you do a study, you know, the effects of that. So, that's just my opinion, I don't think we need to force any of our, our rules off on the public until it really becomes necessary. And at this point, I just, I don't think we need to do that.
May I say something, Madam Mayor? This is a distraction, ladies and gentlemen. All it takes is four seconds for fatality. So far, that councilman Guerrero says it's all right, but ladies and gentlemen, when they come knocking at your door, be deep. Telling you that there is a fatality, and it's your daughter. And you have to go and identify. That's that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we talked about this about four years ago. And at that time, it was me discussing the legislature, and I know the legislature didn't, didn't pass it. Is, is that why we didn't pass it here as a local ordinance, and we were waiting for the state to do something? You remember? But at that time, it was texting and driving, not, not necessarily hands-free. Is that what it was?
That's a violation of it.
Governor, you vetoed that.
Excuse me. The previous legislature, uh the bill was approved in the House, it didn't make it into the Senate, however, the governor said that he would veto the bill if it didn't make it to his desk, for basically the same reasons that Councilman Carrera stated. Those were his reasons as well.
Now, if we did that, we'd have to eliminate people eating tacos on the way to work in the morning, or putting their makeup on. You know, I think more people put makeup on than are doing cell phones, or maybe not.
I think there's a ready ordinance like that, it's called reckless driving.
This is just a discussion, ladies and gentlemen, so we want to help you, you know, huh? Step up front, sir.
We got too many laws as it is, you can't guarantee anyone's safety, no matter how many laws you pass. You can't even guarantee your own safety. So, we don't need any more laws in the books, I agree with the gentleman there.
But it's a distraction, sir.
Hey, everything's a distraction, birds flying, the sun hitting in the sky, me driving a french fry, and take a drink of my water while I'm driving on the road, just the world running in front of me. You gonna pass a law against all that, too?
Officer Evans, can you come and make a presentation, sir?
Sure.
Sir, what is your name, for the record?
Paul, uh, Paul. P A U L.
Paul?
Paul.
So, you? Thank you.
I was asked to look into it a little bit, and, of course, having some familiarity with it. Of course, San Antonio has recently passed an ordinance. I've looked at the ordinance, and it's well-written. Actually, the draft that would apply to Torresville is well-written. And it addresses the issue as we know it. Some of the problems, as we've seen in the state legislature, as was mentioned, are, and mentioned here tonight, are, you know, it's another law, that may or may not address the issue. Here's the problem. Texting and driving, using a cell phone, is a distraction that is documented, there's no question. You're approximately four times likely, more likely to have a, an accident while you're doing that sort of thing, than if you weren't. The problem is, the studies, as they exist right now, show no difference, basically, between hands-free or a handheld device. So if you're using a cell phone, you got it to your ear, you're about four times more likely to be in an accident. more likely to be in an, in an accident, but that also applies to a hands-free device, from what they know right now, okay? The distraction is the problem, whether it's texting, whether it's talking on the phone, whether it's using a handheld device, whether it's using a hands-free device. The intent, without question, is a good thing, getting on the forefront of, of protection, of course, our law enforcement agency is for that. The question to you all is, is this specifically going to address the issue? And that's not a question that I can answer, because the studies don't support that it is or is not, it, it's a question. So you've got to decide whether you want to, you know, take this step and, and create the ordinance on the hopes that it's going to prevent some things, and, and maybe you'll, you know, in the future, you'll find that, hey, we made the right decision, uh, or five years down the road, or five years' studies that it had no impact whatsoever on actual death rates or crash rates within our city and state. Uh, and, and that's the best information I can give you. The information is not clear, other than distraction while driving will cause more accidents. How that distraction comes, nobody can really agree on, uh, hands-free, handheld, that sort of thing, so it's kind of a muddy water situation, uh, so it's up to you to make the right decision to decide, you know, which way to go, based on, you know, citizens and constituents. I know that's as clear as mud, but that, you know, that's about where we're at.
How many fatalities have been, uh, reported due to utilizing phones or texting?
In our city, we have not...
Statewide?
Statewide, I don't have those facts. Uh, I know that it's probably considerable, and in, in my opinion, it's like anything else, if, if there's one, that's one too many. So, so we, we agree there. Uh, the question is, how do you prevent that one death, or that, that even if it's, you know, five, ten, twenty, whatever the number is, how can we prevent that? And can we prevent that by legislation? If we can't, then it makes no sense to, to do so. If we can, it makes absolute sense to do so. I can't answer the question, because, again, the numbers, uh, there's no clear-cut studies at this, at this time regarding hands-free versus handheld, so if, you know, uh, you know, you've got to make that decision.
Officer, let me ask you, if, if we should pass this ordinance, could it be tied in into highways or thoroughfares, or, uh, associated with a certain speed limit? In other words, on Highway one eighty-one, where it's fifty-five, or sixty, or, or seventy on, on the highway, versus coming down Peach Street, where it's just a residential area?
I, I don't see that that would create a problem, in other words, I think you could enact a zone.
A zone.
Right, I, I don't, and, under my, you know, my knowledge, I don't think you'd have an issue with that, but I'm not sure, I, I would rely on the city attorney to do that research as far as the charter goes, uh, but I, I don't think that would be an issue, I think you could create a zone that would do that, as the state has done with the school zone, so... I apologize for chewing gum, my ears, I, I've been, under the weather, my ears are popping.
I'll make a comment. This is where we ourselves need to be responsible, okay? I use two phones, and I have to tell myself, you can't drive and talk at the same time. If I had a hands-free, it'd be the same problem for me, because you still have the set-up, you're still talking, you're still distracted with what you're doing. I mean, totally. So it has, it has to be an individual responsibility, and I would like to see how, how it works for San Antonio, before we try to implement anything. You know, there's a lot of things that we do in our vehicles, like Johnny said, eating a taco, drinking coffee, how many times do we spill it, and we're looking, trying to clean ourselves up, or whatever, and you're driving, that's just as dangerous.
There, there are some studies that indicate, one of those is out of Texas A&amp;M, that you use about thirty percent less of your attention driving, specifically while you're in a conversation. So that is a little bit different, eating, you know, that's, requires gross motor skills, you pick it up and eat. Uh, then you're putting on makeup, and that's what we call gross motor skills.
That's talent.
Wow.
The foil on your lap, and eating over the foil, so it doesn't fall on your back.
Well, I've been doing that since I was, so it's easy, but what I'm getting at is the actual conversation, using your brain, is where the actual distraction comes. Uh, and so that is, there is a difference between eating, uh, and a few other things, and then having a discussion, and texting, of course. So there, there are some studies that indicate there is a difference there, uh, so I would caution you not to lump it all together, uh, texting, talking on the cellphone is a distraction, it, it, you are four times more likely to be in, in an accident, but how to prevent that from happening, I, I don't know, and I can't answer. I think Councilmen's got some great points, but, and, you know, as is Councilman DeRoe, you know, you have to make that decision, and, you know, go from there, that, I can only give you the information that we found, and it's, again, it's not clear-cut at this time.
Drinking and driving is a law, but it still happens.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, could we continue this discussion with a public hearing sometime in the future, maybe next month, or?
Yep.
Thank you, Council. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, General Paul?
Yes, sir.
Instead of passing a law, we could, like, go to the school, and have the math teacher, have the kids calculate the forces involved in a fifty mile an hour collision, it's a simple equation, and, and just those forces alone is enough to shred the human body into spaghetti. I mean, if the kids can work with the numbers and understand it, I think they'd have a better appreciation for the mass of that automobile, and how tragic it would be for them to be in, but, that's all I have.
The equation here, Madam Mayor, is safety is a priority, and, you know, it, it is a distraction. Why do we have to wait for fatality and then jump on board and pass an ordinance? It's be proactive.
I don't, I disagree in that, but you know what? I remember back when y'all passed, it was passed, the, uh, the kids being in a car seat.
I didn't pass it.
Tell me how many parents you see that actually put their children, who is really very important in our lives, in a car seat, and they get killed in an accident, lie out the door, or whatever. That, to me, is a lot more important than you're going to save a child's life.
All lives are important, Madam Mayor, regardless of your space.
All I'm saying is, is we just have to be careful how we implement something and see how it works before we jump. I'm not against, but I'm saying...
Thank you.
Okay, now, other questions? I was gonna put the county on the spot on it, but I, I... Okay, now, we're gonna go on to item three A, consideration in action to approve the Cop Finley as a third engineering firm approved by the city of Florisville. Look, can I ask two of both of them at the same time, because there's two, you can't hold on one without considering the second?
Say the question again, please.
Whichever you choose to, to pick, you go.
As I understand what you're doing tonight, Madam Mayor, is you're doing what we did approximately two years ago, which is you're determining that under the Professional Services Treatment Act, if a particular firm is qualified, meets qualifications after negotiating an interior preventative, to be used as a city engineer. And you did that previously, you were qualified, M&amp;S, and you had another firm that, that went through the first qualification. Qualified the firm does not mean you're hired, but in a process of negotiating fees, but it's simply a determination of whether or not you deem that firm to be qualified.
Okay, show them the presentations we have to ask.
What is the recommendation for staff?
Staff recommendation, Cop Finley as a third engineering firm up at the city of Florisville, would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I, after that, uh, they're both, you know, reading, reading and, and hearing both of them, they're both pretty much the same, uh, and I'll forgive them that they're both ags, so, uh, but, again, uh, Mr. Ganz on the Cop Finley has attended our meetings, I think it's all back to its two years, I think he's even, even talked to Mr. Dawson when he was here. Uh, I don't know if he talked to, uh, Mr. Perez when he was here, but he's shown interest prior, so he's attended on his own meetings, and, uh, but, but, I guess I've known Mr. Ganz since then, and, uh, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the Cop Finley as a third engineering firm approved by the city.
Do you have a motion, do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Councilman DeHaven, have you voted?
Yes.
Councilman, please?
Yes.
Councilman DeRoe?
Yes.
That was very spicy, but... Do you have a second, we can... No, you just do the last, just the last, you want to make some of the last, I should have my...
That is the third firm.
Yes, sir. Now, we're gonna go on to...
I mean, it'd be good to, are you gonna table out a B, or is it simply just no action?
No action.
Okay, then someone's left in the record, please, now, except for...
Okay, now, we're gonna go on to item three C, consideration in action to approve refunding the county administrative fees made on permits issued before the ordinance twenty fourteen zero two zero was passed.
Madam Mayor, my name is Tom Beadman, I'm the county auditor. I'm here on behalf of the county requesting the administrative fees that we were charged in the amount of three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents in June of last year to be credited back to our account, because we know we're gonna be having more and more permits issued as our projects are going off the courthouse in Annex Three. The permit was issued on June the ninth, and my understanding was Commissioner Paul working with the city manager, Miss Turner, that there wouldn't be an administration fee charged to the county. The ordinance I know was passed last fall by the councilman, and we're asking if the council would, um, consider giving us a credit on our account back on that, since we already just patented it. And that's appreciated consideration over here on that.
Do I have some good one?
Yes, I, I would like to say that staff has met with twenty, several different times we're trying to work through this permitting process. And again, I want to reiterate that, prior to, uh, Councilman Phil and I have been working very hard, and Mayor, we've taken some of those meetings, but prior to, they hadn't get started, they couldn't wait until we were able to get everything done, so prior to, we had to charge administrative fee. Um, the ordinance allowed us not to charge administrative fee for all tax bodies, and so this will definitely take care of that, and we can actually do a credit if you requested, I believe it's somewhere around three thousand dollars to have to apply, just FYI, the last permit that we issued them, uh, actually for the Annex, is that what?
For the courthouse.
For the courthouse, the fee for Veritas was twenty thousand dollars.
And that's for the Justice Center.
For the Justice Center, it was twenty thousand dollars. Now, that's what all of the inspections and all of those things that Veritas charges us, so this, this will be a pass-through, uh, but that was the permit that they paid. So they're paying for what they're receiving, especially the just administrative fee on top, they won't be paying, this will just be allowed to have that credit. But I said it to the judge, and they have agreed that we don't miss anyone who wrote a check to them, but we're saying going forward, we can give them that credit going forward, if you still care to do that. So if someone's gonna ask for staff or recommended, a staff would recommend that you allow this credit to be acquired.
Okay, just for clarification, for the taxpayers of the city of Florisville, we're not losing any money, but we're not charging the county any extra fees?
Correct. The administrative fee is what, is being, you know, actually be decreed.
That was the extra.
Because they're still paying for the Veritas, but...
We are paying for the Veritas and all the inspections, yes, sir.
But, if I may, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is this a fee, though, that the county's gonna pay Veritas, or we're gonna pay Veritas, how does that gonna happen?
County pays us, and we pay Veritas.
All right, so we're still gonna have to obligate ourselves to protect the public interest in the permitting process of getting Veritas to perform that function, and then we're gonna invoice the county?
Yes, we, we don't invoice them, they pay when the permits paid up, and Commissioner Paul can say that they know they don't get to start, so we have the permit in hand, and the check is laid out.
Do me shut down one, two, three.
One is not, it's, I'm just trying to make sure it can answer the question that was asked by the councilman, and for audit purposes, if this is a pure pass-through, then we can treat it as a pass-through for audit, it's not something we're gonna make any money on, but it's an obligation. And just to go back, with an experience to council head, two years ago, this county mayor may not be familiar with, on the La Quinta over there, we had the Bank of America, and their lawyers, and their land use firm insist that we have a Christmas meeting for the sixteen feet that Veritas didn't catch, because we didn't use Veritas on it, on the back zoning variance, and so the Veritas function is to make sure we're following our own ordinances and our own rules in how we grant our building permits, and if you'll remember, we had to have a meeting between Christmas and New Year's to allow that money to be deployed. So what we're really doing is we're paying for a pass-through for Veritas to function on our behalf, to make sure we're following our own rules. Does that answer your question, Mr. DeRoe?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion?
I still move to approve the refunding of the county administrative fees paid on permits issued before the ordinance twenty fourteen zero two zero was passed.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second?
Second, ma'am.
And for purpose of the audit, can we ask the city...
Councilman, is it your time, you?
...to please put David in that ordinance, so we know what's...
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman Peter?
Yes.
Councilman Ian?
Yes.
Motion here is...
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is gonna be item three D, consideration in action to approve the variances and lot sizes on flat properties located at thirteen hundred Hospital Boulevard, considered park size subdivision.
Yes, Mayor, please, please, if you can be patient, I'll let these move a little gentle, she's...
Fourth century, close.
So, I have, um, she can go over the demo that's attached, and we do have the owner, as well, the engineer here to report.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman. I have, um, Foresite Homes here, they've been here a couple of times before, um, they're asking you to listen to them again, and the developer and presenter here, free, and they're still asking for consideration in action regarding the recommendation to the approval of their variance this time.
This variance, it has been approved...
It has been approved by PNC, correct.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, seems there were questions and concerns on the type of home, this is our third time here visiting on this, uh, development, and, uh, believe all engineering and, uh, street range issues have been addressed, I don't know if there are any other questions on here, if there aren't any other questions, and, uh, I'd like to introduce, uh, J.C., he's, uh, general manager of Kibble Lake Comfort Homes, um, he, uh, knows a lot about homes, he's worked in the field, and, uh, but, uh, he could present more information on this type of home, I think he has questions on those regarding, thank you.
Can you go over the variants, are going on the last notes, I lose the variants that we're changing on the lot sizes?
The variance is for the lot sizes, um, there are, um, several lots that are just under the minimum requirements, such as seventy, or sixty-eight, or, uh, they're not much...
So like Lot twelve, for instance, that's fifty-five?
Right. If there's, about half the lots are requiring variance.
That's what I was in the form of, right. There, uh, there, the ones that are actually running perpendicular to the street, mainly there, um...
You hear those by the lots?
Oh. Yeah, like lots, if you want, uh, plus three, three, four, maybe five, uh... If you want, uh, plus three, three, four, maybe five, nine, 10, and 11. So we have those lots listed in the application that we submitted to the city to pay the, the variance fee. But we noted those lots, not the-
So Lot 12?
It's lots like lots three, four, five. Three, four, five, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
Someone on the way, wasn't there, I mentioned there's a new one taken out?
They did, they did, we didn't discuss that meeting.
So did they take one out or it's not?
Not this time. There will be a redesign.
Since they were vastly under the mark, we were trying to go with the layout as it is. And I think, um, yeah, we'll answer any questions, any concerns there are. And a little more information regarding street range engineering for the home, that's what we could do this evening.
Sir, can you, can you say something, the public know what kind of homes that people are built?
Okay, well, we, we could present that, but, and also I'd like to reiterate that we do have all approvals, Tech, City, um-
City?
PNZ.
Approve this already?
PNZ has approved.
Yeah, PNZ unanimously voted, uh, what, the support for the variance.
City engineer has approved it.
Yes.